So this evening, there's only a few items under my report, but I will tell you that probably So we're going to do something unique. We have a presentation on prom, so we'll be presenting presentation to split the prom. I will turn that over to Tim.
Well, I think today, the committee, we have new like a separate fund for our in the past, the prom funds have just been the class that raised them. And this has caused a big problem for us going into this year because all the prom funds that were raised in the previous year have stayed in the senior account and some of them have gone towards senior activities whereas the prom is to us to go towards more prom events. So we'd just like to open a separate prom account so that those events can stay with prom, so that we're able to keep building money to the previous prom for the future proms that will happen in future years.
So the prom committee did submit the constitution that's required with the required structure of their bylaws, their officers, how that fund will operate. As was mentioned in the past, over the last eight years that I've been here, there's some years that there's seed money for the prom, there's other years where there's nothing and the funds are either borrowed from the general fund or student council. And I think what they're trying to do is be able to create that seed money so that they're not looking for funds that they can roll it over. What has happened in the past is that money rolls into the senior class and then at the end of the year, the senior class decides what they're going to do with it. But a lot of that funds have been generated from the prom. So, and I believe that discussion has been with the senior class advisor that there's no, you know, ill feeling that that fund doesn't go to the senior class, but it's just rolled into the prom.
So what's in that fund or what went into it?
So your house talking about it? Yes.
How much is that?
Currently, the stuff that rolled over from was, I believe, around $2,000, which for us would make a big difference so that we, you know, couldn't put that money towards the DJ or towards we want to get pops of ice cream carts there. So it would just give much more benefit this year.
I was just, if you were starting from zero, I was gonna suggest we fund the initial balance since that was an oversight.
So what they'll do is we'll split from the, it certainly, currently the money housed is housed in the junior class fund. So we'll split that off of the junior class, what's been raised towards the prom and then that will be the money there.
How much money do you think it takes to put on the prom?
We are currently estimating that amount, but this year it's definitely going to be a cheaper price than last year just because we're renting out Berkshire Country Club, whereas last year we had it at a local private property. So this year it's definitely going to be upwards of like $5,000.
Do you have time to raise the rest of that money?
Um, yes. Yes, we do. We're also going out for sponsors, so we just sent sponsor letters out. And in the past, we've been able to get in quite a bit of money from that. So we're relying on that as well as the money that the senior classes promised that they raised from prom last year that they promised once we opened this that they would give back to us.
The other piece I think that was, is that they want to make sure that if somebody does donate to the prom, that that money stays with the prom and is not then utilized for something else.
And if one wants to donate towards the prom, how would they go about finding out? Is there like a website or a contact for that?
We don't have a website. If someone would want to do that, they would have to contact Allison Palmer. She has everything.
Should we, since this is kind of a common thing, should we have this?
Um, we can. It's, it's just an accounting thing at this point. So yeah, it's just creating our account shifting.
I didn't know if it affected anything. I was gonna say it would like.
So it'll be on the agenda on the 21st and then it'll be approved. Okay. All right. Thank you. So tonight we're going to do something a little different. Last month in the paper, there was the reports for PSSAs came out and what we'd like to do tonight is, is present to you the data, where we stand for the 21, 22 school year, the progress we've made, how we're progressing forward, etc. So tonight is going to be a little bit different in that it's a group effort. So I'll start the presentation off.
Is that what the mona? It was blinking there.
Minute. And then I'll turn it over to each building principal and then also to the directors. And each one will have a role in kind of explaining where the data sits at each of the buildings and how our special education population is going. And then Dennis and Tim will wrap it up to give you kind of a preview where we're headed as a district based on this data and some of the initiatives we're coming in. So what you're going to see tonight is two things along with a lot of colors. We have, there's, if there's something called the Future Ready Index. So the Future Ready Index is a measurement of how schools are performing on the state assessments. For the high school, it's the Keystone exams. For the elementaries and junior high, it is the PSSAs. So the state measures three different types of data points. One is the State Assessment Achievement Data. So those are the number of students that are performing at proficiency or advanced. The state has set a target that used to be 2030. They're now revising it to say that schools should be at this percent proficiency or advanced by 2033. And then they give you certain benchmarks to him. You remember a couple of years ago with No Child Left Behind, at one point it was 100% proficiency. And here are the targets and we read adequate yearly progress and safe harbor and all that. The state has changed that and they're not at that 100% level, but a lot of them hit somewhere into the mid 80s. The second piece of data is the annual academic. So there's something called PVAS, which is a system that measures growth, our growth of our students and are they progressing where they should be? Are they moving in the direction or are they losing growth? And they measure that on the PA Future Ready in three colors. Red, we have not met those expectations. Green, we've met those expectations. And blue, we've exceeded those expectations. So as each principal comes up and talks a little bit about it, full disclosure, that first bullet there at the State Assessment Achievement Data, you will see a lot of red. And part of that comes in is while during the COVID years, the state did not pause that 2033 or 2030 goal, they kept it advancing. So on our achievement datas, we have not hit those targets, but as the principals will show you, we have met or exceeded the state average. So the first kind of benchmark that we've hit is not, we've not hit that, but we have exceeded state average on many of those categories. The annual growth is what we're really going to hone in tonight on to show you that our students are and exceeding the growth expectations. So we're moving in the right direction. And we all recognize that there's still work to be done. And then that's where Dennis and Tim will talk a lot about that. When we talk about the makeup of the demographics of the district, there are some groups that get identified. Economically disadvantaged, so you can see that 40% of our, of our population is what's considered economically disadvantaged. And that is measured against free and reduced status. So there is a financial benchmark or an income level that classifies that. We have two, about 3% of our population is English language learners. 23% of our special, of our population is special education. And you can see that it breaks it down to foster care homeless and connected in the military at some respects. A little bit later on in the agenda, you'll see that there's some policies that are up for review. And those policies talk about educational instability. And that, those last three is where that education instability comes into play a little bit. Students in foster care, potentially homeless, if there's a disruption in the education, if it's connected to military, etc. So as I mentioned, there's the three colors. You will see red, you will see blue and you will see green. But each of the administrators will explain what each of that means and why it's a good thing or bad. So I will advance to the high school and turn it over to Chris and Nick.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for your time. So as you can see, I'll start at the top left corner with the English Language Arts and Literature for that achievement data that Dr. Desnick referenced. Just to clarify a little bit, this is reflection of seventh graders, eighth graders, and then any high school student that took the literature Keystone. So when I reference literature, algebra, and biology, those are the high school courses that triggered that Keystone sets in. In the upper left corner, you will see the achievement data there. All three are red, like Dr. Desnick alluded to. I'll just explain briefly what you're seeing there on the screen, starting at the top left there with percent proficient or advanced. You can see we're at 58.3%, you know, above the state average of 54.1. You know, with a 2030 or 2033 goal of 81.1%. Yes, sir.
What was the goal for 2022? How bad?
So it's just step two, 2030, 81%. So if you look at it now, you have to kind of map it out because it would be different if you were at 15% compared to 30%. It's not necessarily broken down by every school should be at this point.
Okay, I thought they had maybe a percentage or.
Yeah, to where you exactly.
Yeah, I don't know if we have a current.
It wasn't as defined year to year like No Child Left Behind was where they gave you that target every single year. So that this is more broader focused on that end goal, what he has to come and say.
With mathematics and algebra there in the middle, the percent proficient or advanced currently, we're at 36.7%. It's slightly above the state average of 35.7 with a state goal for the future at 71.8. Last but not least, the science, which would be just eighth graders for PSSA and biology for those who took the Keystone. Percent proficient or advanced, 52.6%. You can see in that category, we are slightly below the state average and working towards the goal of 83%. I would like to reference back to our conversation we had with Mr. Hammer and I when we presented, I believe, back in May in regards to PBIS and our multi-tiered support system and what we're working with, what we're working towards with our students, those tier interventions. So yes, we are aware of those three achievement categories and those subject areas, not, you know, maybe being at the state average or slightly below or slightly above, but putting things in place like interventions using CDT and STAR data as well as developing an early warning system to try and find students with deficit areas and capture them early so we can intervene as soon as possible are just a couple of the things that we are trying to utilize and incorporate with our teachers at the junior and senior high level to work towards those 2030 goals for achievement.
That's, and that's the program we presented last spring.
Yes, and I believe it was in May when Mr. Hammer and I were at Apple, we presented some of that.
So you're still on that track of programming?
Yes.
So what would the number have had been to turn that to green?
81%.
No, they do have, they do have goals a long way. They're not like, it used to be like under adequate yearly progress, you had to hit 57. this, 62. So this year's 22, that goal would have been for all students who should have hit somewhere in the neighborhood of 66.5.
So if you look at it, it will break it down by subcategory. The document that was showing of food making growth. So there's, there's a lot of variables in this. This is kind of a quick snapshot of.
And we can get more data. We originally, the original slideshow for this had almost 50 slides. And we kind of backed things off. We had all kinds of data and charts and stuff like that. And we were afraid that we would just like let everybody sleep. So we figured as we give you a high level overview and then we can break it down further if you want that data.
And moving down to the bottom section there, there you will see the green and blue that Dr. Desnick alluded to. Bottom left, language arts and that literature Keystone for high school students. Again, this bottom section, these three are where we're at growth wise. So where we might be, you know, we're obviously still working towards the achievement piece at the top. Down below, you will see for language arts, seventh and eighth grade PSSAs as well as literature Keystone. The academic growth score, we have the juniors, senior highs 77%. The state average is slightly below that at 76. And we are meeting the state, or we are above the state growth standard there at 70. In the middle, for seventh and eighth grade PSSAs for mathematics as well as the algebra Keystone, the academic growth score we received is an 84.7. The state average was 76.2. So we're significantly above the state average. And we're, we're well above the state's expectation there as well. Last but not least, bottom right would be your eighth grade science PSSAs as well as the biology Keystone. Our academic growth score for the juniors, senior high is 100, where the state average was 74.6. So you can see we are significantly above that state average and significantly above the state growth standard for science as well. Yes, sir.
What's the growth from 2021 school year? Does it test?
Yes, I do believe so. Because that three-year composite they've done in the past, I believe, is not currently active because of pause due to COVID.
So that would have been, came off after we had some in school and some not in school.
And again, those, those tier interventions we're talking about using the data to drive instruction both in the classroom and in the advisory period there for high school and junior high students alike. That'll, that also applies, you know, towards achievement, but as well as the growth measures for our students.
I think the big part here, kind of what Mr. Lynch was talking about, is no, we did not hit the proficiency of what the state overall goal is. We are still working on the proficiency level. That will come. But what we're demonstrating at the bottom is our students are growing and our students are learning. And that's going to culminate into a K to 12 view of our next slide, kind of get away from some of all these focus numbers, is getting that diploma in kids' hands. A little bit simpler information here to look at. It is broken down by different subcategories on the right-hand side, but this is a culminating of kids coming to school, kids participating at school, kids taking a port, and getting down on the kids' level to get them that diploma in their hand. We are above the state average of 86.7 and we are above the 2030 goal for our four-year graduation portfolio. So this is something very proud of. All the systems we have in place to support kids to get them through their educational career and get them to that crossing the finish line with that diploma. So this is a lot of, this is a great number for a lot of our people demonstrating a lot of the good work that we're doing in our school. The big one that I want to just briefly mention on the move because I know we have a lot of slides, is we have made a, we have made a very strong focus with our attendance on our economically disadvantaged students. And we have seen significant increase in their attendance. So that, that number directly correlates with their graduation rate. They're coming to school, they're engaging with all our great people here. They're good graduates.
And all of this data is available. The exact, these charts are taken right off of, it's called futurereadypa.org. Next to some of them, you can see there's a little bar graph. And that, clicking on that will then take you over to the graphs that exist. And then it does break it down by subcategory. So you can kind of see on the right there, that are some of the subcategories. You have to have a certain number of students that are identified in a subcategory to actually have it broken down. Those just happen to be where our subcategories are for graduation for that particular measure. But you can get all this data. It's readily available. You can search, you can compare schools. It breaks it down by each individual school. So a lot, all of this is taken directly off that website that you have. It's futurereadypa.org.
The programs that you're putting in place for this year that you presented last spring, can you see progress with them now that you can measure or do you got to wait to see what we probably pull?
Within the year, we pull immediate data, we pull attendance, we pull discipline. We have what we call an early warning system that tracks our students from kindergarten, junior high, and high school, looks at their grades, looks at their attendance, looks at their discipline, and we'll tier them into groups, high risk, moderate risk, low risk. We then break up and we look at our medias kids and we put that into focus areas for our tiers of support. That could be a check in, check out program. If they have like a face that mentor teacher, from there, if that's not sufficient enough as a support, it will go into our pride program. Within our pride program is a tiered program approach. So there's three tiers within our pride program. So we are supporting our kids in absolutely every avenue possible to get them through and graduate.
I mean, I liked what you presented last spring. So I'm really anxious to see.
Yes, sir.
What I'm excited to see is maybe what next year's data looks like.
Yes, sir.
And if I might add, the teachers at that intervention, that advisory period, that is a very fluid period where often student schedules are set and, you know, minor tweaks and changes come about for certain reasons. But that one period of day, the advisory period, is very fluid. And as needs are found with data, CDT, STAR, data within the classrooms from local assessments or their own assessments, those students are being pulled to work on those deficit skill areas. And then when they, you know, show the growth that they've, you know, have filled the gap, if you will, then they either work on another deficit or maybe they exit that, you know, particular subject area and they can go to another subject area to work on a deficit area there. So whether it be math or language arts. So students are ever-changing in their advisory for that intervention piece. And we're using data to drive this.
And I'm going to ask a question. You know how busy you are too, because it's probably a stupid test, but the math, they only got to set a 71% bar. Is that because, is that stupid a question in that math test that it's unachievable? Or is it, because I've seen some of the test questions and they're just idiotic. So that's my, because to have a 30% math, math is so important to move forward. And God, that little bar set, I'm just curious why that.
We're starting.
From the state, I mean, that's a state bar.
We're really starting to break down exactly what that test is because they can understand content all the way through with algebra. If they can't understand and communicate to you what they know, that's 40% of the test. Doing that constructive response of actually being able to explain that I know this and I'm going to explain it to you how I know it. That's a big piece of it. So we're really starting to break down the subsections of that test and making sure we're hitting each one. And, you know, I think writing is a big component. We better really start writing and, you know, express ourselves in writing through math, through literature, through science. I think that's going to be a big focus.
Get to your point. Now we're taking away teaching algebra, we're teaching algebra so they know how to take a test on algebra. Essential.
Breaking down how to explain yourself in algebra.
Oh, that's, I guess that's my point. Some of the questions, I mean, they try to trap you and that's not right. I mean, there should be no nonsense, non-ask-nine questions is what they should be.
There's more than just a procedure of how to solve the problem. They'll then give them, you know, a couple of sentences called a word problem. They have to then, you know, figure out what the problem's even asking and then in what order does the equation get written? And then, you know, solve the problem from there. So there's much more to it than just being presented at base algebra, a math problem and following the procedure that you practice in class.
And the difficulty is, is, you know, tonight we heard kids that want to be, you know, going to astronomy, chemistry, teaching. You know, I think everybody wants to go into college, track, architect. But a lot of times they have those goals headed to college, but sometimes I'm surprised that that doesn't necessarily translate into proficiency on a test. So, you know, we talk about, what we're trying to focus on is the growth piece. Not that that proficiency is important because that is the measure for which the state is going to judge us on, but there's more to it than just these numbers. And tonight, the takeaway that we want to at least demonstrate is we are moving in the right direction. Things are growing, kids are making progress and going, but there are things, there are decisions along the way that we have to make. Specifically at the junior high, example would be an eighth grade. We have a group of, you know, 30, 40 kids each year that go on to take algebra, one. That's a, that's a grade level where math eight is to be tested on the PSSA. Now, the algebra one Keystone is radically different than math eight PSSAs. So we have, our kids at eighth grade who are taking algebra tend to be very successful on the, on the eighth grade Keystone algebra, but they don't do well on the PSSA for eighth grade, which is bizarre. So there's no way that we can put all the content of eighth grade into a course and all the content of algebra. So at the eighth grade level, we pretty much say, we should focus on the math that's appropriate for the kid and that is algebra. So we know right off the bat that there's a good shot that we could take a 20 to 25% hit on proficiency right off the bat because we're not, we're not teaching them the content to take a math PSSA. We're teaching them the content to be successful in, in algebra if that makes sense. So there are some things, there are some goofy things like that along the way that we, that we encounter. All right. Transition over to Mr. Gears.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. So along with the, Jonah at the junior senior high, I really kind of want to explain some things looking at both sets of data here. So the top set, we're taking a look at how a child should perform at their grade level by the end of the year. That does not take into account any of the accommodations that our teachers do for them when they're taking tests in their classroom. That is assuming that they're reading on grade level. So that, I think, to what they were saying is some of the things that are just not taken into consideration. So if you're to just take a look at our top graphs there, our English language arts, we were slightly above. The state average, our students for math were above there. And our science, we historically do very, very well. Now, the three bottom graphs are what I kind of want to focus on. So to go a little further into PVAS, what that does is that takes a projection from how a student did the previous year and assigns them a number. So they are projected to either score below basic, basic, proficient, or advanced. They're assigned a number. If they hit that, that's great. If they go above, that's where you see the blue in our graphs. That means they are exceeding what they're projected to do. So I would be very concerned if the bottom graphs were red. Because that would be showing that how each individual student is projected to score is not scoring. So it's not simply how they scored last year is how they're supposed to score the next year. That percentage is bumped up. So if I have a student that scored, let's say, below basic in third grade, they're not going to be expected to score proficient or advanced the following year. They're going to be expected to show growth towards that proficiency level. So with that and all the colors there, I just thought it was important to show that as an elementary school, we were seventh out of the 55 elementary schools within our, within our county. And Burnham was right behind us at number nine. So when you look at the colors, it does look scary. Especially if you're just going to focus on where a kid should be by the end of that grade level. That does not take into consideration all the accommodations that we use for our learning support students when they're taking tests. The only accommodations that students are allowed are directions red on the ELI. And math, the question is going to be red though. When it comes to that math test, you like, it's not just computation. We are seeing, the majority of that test is word problems, problem solving. It's not just, can you do the multiplication? So then you apply it to a real old problem. And when you have a student that struggles to read on grade level when you're taking a grade level test, it's not necessarily just assessing their math. It's also. just assessing their math. It's also assessing, well, can they read that problem? If they're going to struggle reading through that problem to decipher what operation to do is very, very difficult.
Is there questions?
Yeah.
So, and maybe I'm missing something here. If, so science looks like they're performing well.
Yeah.
And that, where's the breakdown between the elementary then to why the junior, senior high is below?
So, science.
And am I reading that correctly? Am I?
Yeah. So we take that in fourth grade, they take it in eighth grade. So the eighth grade projection is based on how they did all the way down to fourth grade. How they're projected to do in fourth grade is they have a formula where they take their reading score and their math score and they kind of just figure how they're going to score on science. However, they do that formula, I wish they do for the rest of them because we, we historically performed very, very well in science. But that is not saying like our fourth graders, or I'm sorry, our fifth graders don't take it. So we're not going to see that PBOSS growth in fifth grade. So it's a different formula. If that makes sense. With the reading and the math, you could take a look at how students scored in third grade compared to fourth grade.
So you're telling me they don't actually take a science portion of this, they use the other scores into a calculation to give that?
A calculation to see how they will score. So they're guessing. That bottom piece, yeah, I'm sorry. The bottom piece, how, how they scored in reading and math.
Fourth grade is the first time they get assessed on a science PSSA. So it is a science focused assessment. Generally, the fourth grade test and the knowledge, science knowledge at that point in time is more kind of abstract problem solving thinking than that particular grade band is very strong. Eighth grade is the next assessment, but the content on that test is essentially a mile wide and, you know, an inch deep. It's chemistry, physics, earth science and biology all lumped. And you never know what's going to be on that test that given year. So it's, you're kind of rolling the dice on, you know, what percentage is going to be the makeup. And so that's on the high school side, but also on the high school side is the tenth grade biology P-stud. That test is really in-depth, focused on biology and that's a graduation requirement. So that traditionally we do score very well because kids at this age, at the fourth grade are very inquisitive. That scientific inquiry is a strength of theirs. For whatever reason, the test shifts from more of that style to just crazy amount of content driven. And they've got to retain that knowledge before the eighth grade to do well at an eighth grade test. But again, the biology test, we tend to do well because it's a whole year focused on just that one subject. So it is, it's very different elements.
I'm going to put in there my two cents. Science is more of a hands-on curriculum a lot of times. And hands-on is how you learn. No doubt about it, we could somehow get that across all, you know, all subjects. But hands-on is how you retain things.
We'll be talking more in the next year. The, because the science standards have not changed since two thousand and two, but in twenty twenty-five, the next gen science standards will be coming out and it's all about inquiry and hands-on activities. So shifting from kind of reading about science to actually doing science. And we'll be prepared for that transition.
And to the point, that's why the STEM and STEAM activities are still getting taken, especially at that younger age.
We'll transition to Pen, Penburg. And I will, I'll email this presentation to everybody along with the link if you're interested so you can see.
Hi, everyone. So before I start, I kind of wanted to invite you into a story. We just had data meetings at Penn Burnsville as our elementary buildings do. And so during those data meetings, we look at student data and it's a lot of red and green and blue and yellow and colors. And it's very easy to look at those colors and like your heart starts to beat and like, my gosh, that's a lot of red. Or wow, that's a lot to celebrate. That's a lot of green. But we start to look then at their beginning of the year's score and the middle of the year's score. And so although those scores might look red, we dig deeper and look at the growth. And so I really want to, I'll go over the data at the top, but I really want to kind of continue that celebration of growth that they're having and round out the conversation about our schools. So at the top, you can see that our proficiency and advanced scores in ELA did not meet the app, did not meet the goal for twenty thirty, but they did fall right around the statewide average at fifty-four percent. For math, the statewide goal was seventy-one point eight percent, I think that says. We scored forty-four point one, which was above the statewide average. So although it did not meet, we still scored above the statewide average. Science, kind of continuing with the trend, we did score above the statewide average and met the target. So in that celebration of growth, directing your attention to the bottom, you have blue across the board, which just shows that in all three areas, ELA, math and science, our students exceeded the growth standard, the growth standard, I'm sorry, significantly in math. So I definitely think that's something to celebrate. You know, I can't speak to a ton of things from last year, but I can speak to the short time I've been part of the district and part of our school. And I know that our teachers are building capacity and continuing to work to really meet the students with their individual learning needs and the environment where they are to help empower them to make that growth.
I thi, I think one of the things that's hard is because two out of the last three years, we only had one year that was cool in person already. And that, I think, in a long way, that affects a lot of what we're seeing here compared to what we've seen in the past. So it's, I'm really anxious to see how we grow the next two years when we're all in person already. It speaks volumes to why you got to stay in person no matter what they tell us because it's that important. You can see it here. So.
And in the slides that we did cut out, we did have the chart. So, you know, the little graph icons next to it, we did have it all broken down. Like I said, it did get kind of massive in the number of slides, but it did show. You'll, you'll notice like if you click on those when you get to the website, you'll see that in, you know, the twenty nineteen, twenty school year, we were here. In twenty eighteen, we were here and then there was a, there was a dip. And the majority of those measures show an upward trend again. And in a little bit, I'll show you where the growth was, where we were, where we were scoring in twenty eighteen and you'll see where we're scoring now. And you'll see there, without a doubt, there was, there was a lull, but we are rebounding of where we are. And I would concur. You know, we went through two years of, we missed a third of the year and then, you know, we had some kids virtual, we had some kids, you know, in person, we had a three quarter of our year without a Wednesday. So a lot of this show, we are getting back on track of where we, where we need to be or exceeding where we, where we should be. All right, special.
Good evening. Tonight, before we prevent on the special education day for each of our respective buildings, I just want to give some context insight to who we're really referring to when we're talking about special education students that are participating with the PSSA assessment. A lesson student is qualified to take the alternative assessment. They are participating with the PSSA. For students who qualify to take the alternative assessive assessment, typically this is a low incidence, a student with a low incidence disability, some with a lateral disability or a severe autism perspective disorder. Last year, we had eleven students that were participating in that alternative assessment. So we look at our total percent of student that twenty-two point eight, nearly twenty-three percent. That is twenty-three percent, nearly twenty-three percent of our total student population participating in the PSSA is a student identified with a disability requiring special education services. Now, the reason that is important is when we look at how that instruction is different, a student with, receiving those special education services, that instruction is tailored to the needs of the individual needs. That instruction may look like replacement instruction, whereas it's really a different curriculum or program being taught to their peers in the general education classroom. It may also be the same curriculum program, but it may be taught by a special education teacher or with accommodations and adaptation. So really it's a fine dance between meeting the individual needs of that child and aligning that instruction to the standard, the grade level standards set by the state. I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin Rice. She's going to review the assessment data for each building and then I'll come with our people.
As Dr. Max said, you do see some of that dip in these graphs up here, but in most of them, you are seeing that upward trend. So for this, these first three, these are how special education in our junior senior high performed. So that first graph you can see is our ELA scores. We have recovered since the twenty twenty-one school year and surpassed the previous two years in our scores. For the middle graph there, that's our math scores. So for that, we've not quite recovered from the twenty twenty-one school year, but they are remaining nearly the same. And for our science at our junior senior high, they have remained consistent with some slight improvements. So looking at these graphs, one of the, the two areas that we're going to focus on moving forward with our junior senior high is focusing on that algebra and biology areas. These scores up here are for our Bethel Elementary. So looking at these two, the first graph is our ELA scores. So we have recovered from the twenty twenty-one school year here and are trending upward. And for our math scores in that second graph, these math scores have not yet recovered and have had a slight decline, but we are staying pretty, pretty close in that graph with our scores. So moving forward, with that being said, we are going to focus on our math scores and seeing if any improvements or changes need to be made with our instruction. These two graphs are for Penn Burnsville for our special education population. So the first graph shows our ELA scores. This is the only building and content area that did show that increase after our nineteen twenty school year. And in our second graph up here, that's our math scores. So this area has recovered since twenty twenty-one and is continuing to trend more. So for this area, we're going to continue to focus on the LA.
So Caitlin pointed out the areas to focus on each grade level and each content area. And really our core learning from here is we're dealing with current programs, interventions and resources that are, that are using to instruct our children receiving special education services. Like I said earlier, we really are working to gauge the alignment with meeting the grade level and state standards and aligning that with the individual child's needs. This quote here, I feel really sums it up. You know, we're constantly saying the program, the content, the instructional provider needs to fit the needs of our students. We don't need our students to fit our program. Really our mission is to meet the individual needs of our students while aligning the state standards to create a well-rounded and well-prepared student.
Is there any correlation with teacher turnover? I don't know how much teacher turnover we've had, but some of the stuff that hasn't rebounded? Is there any, I mean, I know in my short time on board, maybe you've seen some teacher turnover stuff. Is there anything, just from your experience, being here, seeing graph, is there anything that jumps out at you with retaining a teacher or by not retaining, retaining a teacher that?
I think, I think what, and you're right, over the last year, we've seen that turnover. I think the one piece that we have had at the teaching level has been the consistency of these. You know, our teachers, for the most part, do not turnover and they've been kind of the, the individual that's held the ship steady. Where I think some of that leadership turnover is where we've had some of the issues. Because, you know, when you project over the last several years, since twenty eighteen, nineteen to twenty-three, we've had a lot of administrative change. And with each new administrator comes a different perspective or a different approach, a different focus. So I think on our end, the turnover there is more at the leadership level that has impacted it than so much the teachers. Teachers are for the most part remain pretty steady. So when you compare then, when you look at the growth, and this is, this is, I think is, is really telling and in a positive. So if you take the growth overall at each grade level in twenty eighteen and you look at where our growth is now, the majority of our kids were well below the growth index. And now, four years later, you're seeing a different picture. Fifth grade historically, since the beginning of PSSAs, has been a black stain on all school districts. For whatever reason, there is a, there's a shifting content. You get third, fourth grade, which is much more broad. Fifth grade begins to hit a little bit more in-depth specific skills. It's building upon the two other years of the testing and standards. And fifth grade across the board in the state, every year is historically low. And that's been, even in the district, fifth grade has always kind of taken a hit. But when it comes to math, we're moving and you look at across all grade levels, we are in the light shade of blue and that's where we want to be. So our growth is moving in the right direction. We're rebounding where we should be. We're headed in the place we are. So I think a lot of the programs and things we've put in place, while we've spent this year and next year reassessing that as to where we are, I think a lot of what has been put in place, a lot of the teaching, a lot of what we've had, has led us to this point on a very positive note. Same thing with English Language Arts, we're moving in the right direction. You know, you can see even where, you know, there's that fifth grade curse again, I guess you could say. But you look at eight, you look at seventh grade, we're moving and everything is shifting to where it needs to be. And even when you pull our PSSA science, you know, historically, we've always done well there and it continues to be. We take a look at the keystones, algebra, our growth has always been strong in algebra. At the, at the high school level, even our achievement data at the high school and the keystones has been very positive. And I know we talked about last meeting, the idea of splitting the high school and the middle school officially into two buildings. And I think what you will see when you do that and data becomes separated is, I think you'll see a difference in, in how that data reads. I think the high school data, because it focuses on specific content, algebra, biology and literature, I think you'll see a different, I think you'll see the high school scores are much better when separated. Keystone Biology, below to well above, which is the right direction. And even literature, and that's something we've talked about for the last couple of years, we've recognized that that's a weak spot in, in the high school. We've been working towards it. Chris has been doing a phenomenal job working with the high school teachers on that. And you'll see, you know, while it's small, there's still progress shifting to the right direction. But we do know that that's an area of growth and our teachers have done a great job. Our teacher at the high school, Roz Aldridge, leads the Keystone and she's done a lot of progress and has a lot to celebrate as far as our benchmarking we've done this year with the kids advancing in the right direction. So that's kind of the data in a nutshell of those PSSAs. And you can drill down deeper on that website and I will get this out to each one of you and I'll send that link to the, to the board members as well. And I will even post this on our website so everybody has access to it to see this. So that's what our data is showing from last year. And then Dennis and Tim are going to now transition to where we're headed based off of all that.
So before Tim and I jump into kind of forward thinking and forward direction, I really want to take a hard pause and articulate something that's incredibly important. We're looking at colors and we're looking at numbers. We need to step back from that. We need to really think of what they represent. Those are our kids, right? They're, they're more valuable to us than a number. More valuable to us as a graph. For us, the dimension, teacher turnover, there are. There are tremendous amounts of blood, sweat, and tears and emotion that goes into these scores and things that you don't necessarily see. Our approach moving forward is, is really kind of capitalizing on the fact that, all right, we don't control the assessment that the state puts out there as a measuring stick, but we control our attitude and effort as we prepare our students for success and achievement in whatever pathway they, they choose. I mean, that's our goal. We still have a responsibility, a tremendous responsibility, to showcase and be accountable to that growth and achievement. But at the end of the day, we're not, we're not trying to set up and create learning experiences to create test-taking champions of the world. We're trying to create life champions. You know, transferable skills and attributes that are going to help our kids just excel. So when you look at these numbers, it's easy to get caught up in the reds, blues, the greens, like Lindsay had said. But when you listen to, you know, everyone across the board, the teachers are, are working hard to create these learning experiences. The kids are working hard, and we're showing growth. And we want to start to focus on the fact that we don't want to look at those red scores and make knee-jerk decisions and say, all right, we're red in math, let's throw more white to kids. Or we're red in, in writing, let's just increase the timing. We want to be very careful. We want to be very calculating. We want to be collaborative about what's going to help the students get better. When you focus on achievement, you might, you might reach achievement. But if we're measuring achievement by improving a test score and we teach kids how to become better test takers in mathematics, we're missing an opportunity to focus on the process. No sports team in the world focuses on the win without thinking about the progression of skills and teamwork and necessary attributes that get that win to be possible. So as we look at this, again, our focus is on how can we constantly grow our capacity at a systems level to make sure that we're supporting our teachers and engaging them to be a part of that growth process so that ultimately, we're coming at this at a unified front with one voice, one vision, focused on constantly growing the district's capacity to serve our kids. And that's really that precursor of what Tim and I are going to talk to you about and some of the irons that we have in the fire that we started this year and we're going to continue to for remainder this year and next year.
So earlier this year in a meeting that we were having, Dr. Netnick, as we were talking about some of these exact things, made the statement that it's not broken. And that kind of stuck with me. And as I was reading something else that came upon this quote, and I thought, okay, wow, like this, this encapsulates kind of the work that we are engaging in right now, that it's not a process of fixing. It's a process of studying, improving, and becoming a learning organization. And those three actions, courses of actions, are what we're engaged with right now. And then more broadly, those three courses of actions fit with our district's mission statement as well. So as we move forward in this portion of the conversation, we're going to take each of those pieces and tease out how they connect with our mission statement and what that means as we move forward. So to start the conversation, Dr. Perk and I like to start with highlighting our studying process that we've undertaken and how that's given us the context to understand the expectations for the district. So we started this year and then continued through, actually November, with a deep dive analysis of our systems. And we kind of took it in two parts. So the first piece is there, the curriculum and then materials. Those were our kind of objective, quantitative pieces that were on paper. They didn't have to do with teachers, with people, with kids. It was more of the hard pieces. So we were able to take a look at our current curriculum documents, what we currently have in terms of material, resources, our learning walks in K-6. We were able to go into classrooms to see how CKLA is being implemented, how study safety is being implemented, how our ambitions program is being implemented, what that looks like in our staff's hands, what it looks like on our students' end. And then we were also able to flip that coin and do a little bit of the subjective qualitative work when Dennis led us in a SWOT analysis back in August, and we were able to report back to staff on, this is what our takeaways were in having that conversation around what are the strengths that you see with the district? What are our weaknesses? Where are our opportunities? And then we were able to layer on some of the information that we gathered as we had those one-on-one conversations with all the staff to start the year. And then more recently, as Lindsay mentioned when she was speaking, our RTII system, we've been able to sit in on some of those data meetings to kind of get an understanding of where our student supports are and how those are operating. And basically, when we, we take all that data, we take all that we've seen in the first three, four months of the year, the conclusion that we kind of collectively walked away with is that we've got a lot of strong pieces of system in place. We've got strong staff. We've got a lot of good, solid materials. Where we were lacking was we didn't quite have that clear, shared purpose to unify a vision, so.
So what we find, especially the last couple of years, is when a problem comes up, we can be solutions-focused, look for the quick fix, implement it. You know, some examples would be, you know, students are struggling with math. You know, we're immediately looking for, look for the quick fix. Is there a math program out there that'll, that'll fix this problem? We want to shift the dialogue. We want to kind of go from solutions-focused to purpose-focused and not solution-driven but purpose-driven. So as we started to articulate and come up with, how do we collectively pull everyone together and define that why? Like, not just understand that we have a program in place. We want to really understand why is that program in place? How does that serve our students? And what does that look like in the classroom? In December, we pulled the staff of at each building together, and Tim and I introduced one of our favorite Ted Talkers, Simon Sinek. And this concept of inside-out thinking, you know, this concept that people don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. You're not, kids aren't going to come into a classroom and they're going to ask you, what are you doing today? And you're just kind of like, oh, we're learning. We're just going to do fractions. It's what we're going to do. How we're going to do it, we're going to do problems one through 13. Why? Because it's important to know, right? When you think outside in, you don't really inspire change. When you think inside out, you have that deeper purpose. Like, why are fractions and that skill transferable to your life outside of school? And then start to develop the how and the what. It just makes for more buying, more motivation, and really, it helps strengthen the system. So we started to challenge the entire organization in this concept of inside-out thinking and starting with why. Start with a purpose and then work what it looks like in the day-to-day instead of just trying to find a quick fix solution to a problem that may or may not be sustainable. So with that inside-out thinking and, and you go to the next one. We then started to look at, all right, with our mission statement and knowing that we haven't really taken the time to articulate what it is that we truly believe in some of these different areas, we started to shift our focus now, and this is where we're living, to the improving and the belief stage. So the irons that we have in the fire with this, the first is our instructional leadership team. Every month, we pull the instructional leadership team, which is all of our building principals, and then Dr. Matt, like Dr. Netnick and myself. And we're really working on a focused effort to come together and make sure we have vertical and horizontal alignment in beliefs and vision and systems so that we can then strengthen our, our entire district's capacity with respect to MTSS, with respect to RTII, all these big programs that schools say they do. We're really taking the time to go slow to go fast to make sure that we have solid belief systems in place. Then build structures and systems that allow our teachers to be in the best position possible so that then they can impact students. So that's a lot of work that we're doing right now from an MTSS standpoint. But we're also articulating that why and that vision in other ways by getting staff involved.
So after our planning forward meeting in December that we had with each of the buildings, we asked at that point for volunteers to join committees for around literacy, math, and science as this moment of starting was planned for this year. And I have to say that we had a ground-saw of interest from staff. It was really compelling. On the ELA end, I actually had to end up turning people away because we had so many people volunteer within an unmanageable group of people. The entire junior, senior highs ELA department volunteered. So it speaks to the, to the staff we have. But what we've done so far is we've met twice. Science, not yet, because we have until 2025. And running three simultaneous groups was a little unmanageable. So right now, we have two groups running simultaneously, a literacy team and a math team. We've met twice so far where we had come together to develop a purpose statement for literacy and for math, articulating our why. Why is literacy important? Why is math important? And then move into a vision. If this is why it is important, how do we reach an ideal state of instruction and learning in ELA, in math? Where we'll go from there is we'll give a needs assessment to all staff who construct an ELA in math to gather a little bit more data, to layer over top of what we've already gotten, a little bit more focused on kind of planning forward. And then using that data, we'll break it down and we'll begin setting goals for ourselves for literacy and math, and then prioritizing those goals. And we'll include things like curriculum, professional development, and leadership. So we'll have that to be able to share with the board once that work has reached completion. Now, through that needs assessment and that extra data, what we all end up having is a good triangulation of our data of having that needs assessment, the SWOT analysis that we did, the learning walks, and we'll really be able to say, like, we have some valid conclusions and reliable information that we've been able to kind of paint this picture of context. And then with that, with that, we'll be able to move into that process of becoming a learning organization to focus on that achievement. And that is where this last piece comes into play. So we are currently working on a portrait of a Trojan. We've begun with visiting the BCIU. They did a leadership series, a three-day piece over the last couple of months for districts to be able to come in here about districts that have already done this process and how to work through some of this. Around Morse County, there are several districts who have already implemented one. And I know that as part of our comprehensive plan for the district-level comprehensive plan in a document that Mr. Hammer had included this and kind of where we're headed over the next three years. So we've begun this work with a team of teachers and Mr. Hammer. And our, that group has determined the why for this portrait of a Trojan as that we believe our mission statement is only achievable when we have engaged all stakeholders to understand what is expected for a Trojan to be successful in our ever-changing world. So with that understanding, we're prepared to move into the next steps.
Right. The key, key aspects of that why are the fact that we're talking about all stakeholders and expectations. When we look at this portrait of a graduate, we're looking to engage all community members. We're talking about people who have students in school in terms of parent role, engaging school board, local businesses. We want to engage everyone to identify what are those expectations? What are those attributes that we feel are tremendously valuable that all students should have so they can be successful? So that they can live out that, that achievement piece in our mission statement? So with that why, we're working with a, a team of teachers right now on kind of creating a timeline that'll start in August, where we're going to start to pull some focus groups together, different types of members of our community to start to identify what are those key attributes? What are those things, those principles, those maybe intangibles that all students should have that are going to help them achieve or achieve at the next level? And I know we've even had conversations at board meetings where it's difficult to find workers in various fields because they lack certain characteristics or skill sets. That's what we're talking about. What, what is it that we value? What is going to be that North Star for us that's going to guide everything that we do? Because as we focus on growth, this portrait of a Trojan, these are going to be those true communal values. This is what we think all students should aspire to be. This is that measuring stick, internal creative measuring stick of what achievement looks like. And then with that, everything we do, whether it's professional development, learning experiences, curriculum, everything's going to funnel through that lens. And all of our processes are going to be put in place to help students basically take what is a theoretical set of values and beliefs that we think all students should have. And we will work tirelessly to get them there so that they're not only achieving in a four-year cohort in graduation, they're not only achieving on, you know, assessments and meeting a 2030 goal, they're achieving far beyond that. They're, they're achieving to the point where, you know, I'm, I'm hoping to sit at the table with a number of community members and say, we're not struggling to find workers who have these skill sets because we grew them in our district. And we want to keep them in our district. And we're, we're actually creating tangible and transferable skills to day-to-day life. So when we look at this again, it's not a process of fixing. There's, there's nothing that's broken. There's a lot of success, and it's highlighted, and we see it every single day. You walk through our school's tremendous positivity, tremendous success. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we plateau. So we want to capitalize on the fact that we, we tend to respect and honor where we are and where we have been. There's nothing wrong with it. We're, we're proud of that. We're proud of who we are and what we represent. But we have to always strive to learn growth and make a bigger impact on those that we serve. We don't want to be comfortable with where we're at. We want to constantly push each other. And we want to bring that mission statement to life and beyond so that we're making sure that we're doing the best we can for our community.
So I know that's a lot. And I, and we estimated about a half an hour for that presentation, and that was a way underestimation. But we wanted to give you, I know we often don't share that data out there. And there's a lot of things that are going on, you know. And I think for the first time in our district, you know, we have been, when a problem has come up, we've looked at programs or we've looked, as Dennis said, for solutions to simply plug the hole, if you will. And I think, you know, for the first time across the board, all stakeholders, staff engaged. We do a lot of meetings in this room. There's discussion about, you know, instead of just plugging the holes, let's find out why the ship is leaking, why the hole was there first. And then let's build solutions to make sure that doesn't happen. So all of it wrapped around this idea of a portrait of a Trojan. So at the end of the day, when we have conversations, this is what we, as a district, everybody, all community members, board, students, parents, this is what we believe a Trojan is. So when we have conversations and we don't believe, you know, people are making expectations, the expectations are that portrait of a Trojan. And how do we get that? So that's to come. You know, we're working through that this spring and into next year. And we'll engage this body as well as everybody else. But we've kind of been laying the groundwork with a team at the high school under Chris's direction.
Any comments from our staff out there? I know there's a number of excellent teachers out there.
It's been wonderful to have input and to be invited to participate and have conversations and beyond things. It's nice to feel heard and your opinion valued. So I believe we're all pretty pleased with the direction things are headed. And we're excited to see what happens in the future.
Thank you. That's, that's an exciting piece we just said.
So the next part of my report is...
I said we pay him later.
Is the 23, 24 school year calendar. We had some discussions last meeting. And part of that discussion was the flexible instructional days. And I know there was some questions as to what does that look like? So we did send out, we did ask staff to give us some examples. But the difficulty with giving you paper copies or examples is there's a story or there's some information behind that. So our third grade team at Bethel graciously said, hey, you know what? We will give you paper copies, but it may not make sense. We'd like to kind of show what we actually do on a flexible instructional day. And so I will invite them up. Michelle, Tammy, and Kristen will present a little bit about what they do on a normal basis and then what the flexible instructional days mean.
So while Tammy gets it set up, basically, we went into Google Classroom during COVID. We had never used it before and we liked it so much that we've just continued using it. From day one, our kiddos in third grade learned how to use Google Classroom. We use it daily in the class if we have something that we assign that we're putting out, they know to go to the day to check it. It's helpful too when a student is absent, parents will reach out to us and be like, so-and-so's absent today, but if there's any work they can work on. And we say they can go right onto Google Classroom and see what we're doing in the classroom for the day. So when we were asked about the flexible instruction, it just seems it was very easy for us because we do have a lot of things that are already set up. So if there would be a flexible, flexible instruction day, we would just automatically put it on Google Classroom. And we've already showed the kiddos how to get on, what it looks like. Now the 23rd was the day before Christmas Eve, so I mean, obviously there's a lot of parties and things going on that day. So we wanted to show you what it would look like on a regular day, at least for third grade. We planned together, so our lesson plans are exactly the same and we have a format. So we just thought we would share it with you and see if you have any questions.
I know, I was just saying.
We need to figure out how to make like Mac pockets size.
All right. So when our kiddos log onto Google Classroom with their iPads, this is the screen. They see, of course, for our respective classrooms, we just decided to use one. And they know to go to Classwork because again, this is something we do every day. And we have it set up very kind of easily so that, let's say we were to have a snow day on Tuesday, February 7th. I have, this was from earlier today. All right. So if we were to have a snow day on Tuesday, February 7th, this is how we would set up our flexible instruction for that day. So we have the subject labels here and for science, the kiddos will click on it and they have their instructions right there. So they'll click on the link below, remember to answer all the slides, here's your code to get in, call me on Zoom if you need me. So they will click on this near pod.
And they're like, we do near pods all the time.
So this isn't a surprise to them. They're not going to have 10,000 questions of what to do. This is everyday stuff for them. Very seamless when we do things online or like I had a kiddo leave for a doctor appointment today and mom said, is there anything he's going to miss this afternoon? I said, yep, let me pop it online for you, here it is. So he'll come back tomorrow not missing anything and all caught up because I was able to push it out to him virtually. So here's just an example of our near pods. So we actually voice them over so that the kiddos can hear us.
Today we're going to talk about the sun's position.
And then the kids have to go through. And obviously they can read the slides, but for kids who may struggle to read the slides, we like to voice things over so that they have...
How does the sun's position in the sky depend on Earth's movement around the sun?
And I won't, you know, belabor this, but after each slide, you know, they have to participate so we know that they're actually doing the work. They can't go to the next slide until they participate in the questions we have set up for them. So we know that they're participating in the work and they're not just saying, oh yeah, I listened to that, it's fine, it's fine. We can see who is participating and who's doing what they need to do. Yep, see, I didn't, I didn't answer a question, so I couldn't move on. So again, it's just, you know, we set up a virtual expedition for them so they can kind of have a little VR experience and then learn about what we're talking about. But that's just a, a science example. We have some open-ended questions based on that nature. So they, they type an answer to that. How would you explain this to someone? So that would be their science for the day. Their math.
How long is that, about a couple hours?
It was, it depends on the kiddo and how, you know, thorough the job they do.
We usually probably say 20 minutes.
And a lot too with elementary, the parents, especially when we said virtual on dates, we would push everything through on a Tuesday night because there's parents who have to work and children going to caregivers' houses. So they would actually appreciate it because they could either do some of it with them at night or at least know what was expected of them to work on.
And we do, if we know, if you would know about flexible instruction day the night before, we pop this on the night before and say, hey, mom and dad are home with you the night before. If you want to do it the night before, great, then you have yourself a snow day tomorrow and go out and play as much as you want. But if it's there all of the next day as well and we are available as a resource, should you need us on that snow day.
Last year, we had a flexional, a flexible instruction day and I had a kiddo that needed a lot of support. Mom was working with some of the older sisters and he was on with me the entire time. So they know how to share their screens, like when we're doing things so that I was able to help him. Whereas the students who maybe have more support at home, that they need to get on, they got it done whenever they had a chance.
So this is...
Yeah, hit them a little arrow to the right.
So this is an example of what we would do for math. So we've actually taken their math book and popped it onto this app called Class Kick because it makes it easier for them to write on their iPads. And we don't want them logging their math books back and forth for virtual days because then they get left at home and then it's a whole thing. So we just pop it on, on Class Kick here and, you know, circle the questions that we want them to do. Again, we circle what's important because we want them to be learning, but we also realize that they're kids. We don't want them to have to do every single problem when we can just get to the meat of what we need. So we, you know, just do the ones that are circled in red. And then Class Kick is very nice because we can go on and see live what they're doing. So as kids are working on this, we can see, hey, you're struggling with number 16, hop on Zoom, I can help you out with that. And we can kind of see exactly what the kids are doing. So we can keep having them that way as well.
When they're finished with their work, they have to take a green hand which then alerts us that they are finished. So then we can go on and correct it. We can make notes to them or, you know, like you said, we can just say, hey, hop onto Zoom, you might need help with this. So it's, it's interactive with that.
So what happens if this, tomorrow's a snow day, you know, tonight you can do a lot. Here, until I come doing this tonight, you say tomorrow you didn't throw up, like they do it. And then tomorrow you go on and you say, oh, I see they completed it. And they have some errors. What happens to that?
So we could either, you know, we could do a dojo them and say, hop on Zoom, let's take a look at this. Or if we know that their grandparents' house, their parents are at work, then when we're back to school, we can just say, hey, I noticed when we were home. Let's take, pull you over and take a look at some of these things that you need to show over.
We can also send them a message on our Google Classroom page too, so that they can receive that message on their iPad. So if I wanted to meet with somebody at Zoom at 10 o'clock, I could just say, hey, hop on at 10.
I'm just thinking like, like my case, they could do it all at night and then they wouldn't even look at that the next day at all. They'd be out.
I think too, it's kind of seamless because we're not giving them busy work. We're actually teaching them curriculum. So the next day when they would come in, just if a student was absent, we would review with them and then move on to the next lesson. And then anybody who was still struggling, that's when we'd pull them into a small group. So I think it's just a continuation of what we would have been doing on the school day.
How long does it take you to set this up?
I have to say, virtual Wednesdays was when we like literally did all of this. So Michelle joined our team this year and it was really easy because she joined after being in second grade and we were able to share all of our resources with her and...
It was amazing.
Like when we have a substitute, it's not a big deal for us to have a substitute, especially if it's somebody with a computer because all of our lessons are on Google Docs. So we just share and everything, the links that we use for everything are already there. So if one of us has an emergency come up and the other one can't come in, we gotta be shared with the staff and we're all on the same page.
So our language arts example for a snow day would be Google Class Kick. Read or listen to chapter three. So again, it's just a continuation of what we're doing. It's not busy work, so we did chapter two the day before. On a snow day, we're going to do chapter three because that's where we work. Complete comprehension check, go to slide six, call me on Zoom beginning. So this is what that looks like. So again, we just took our reader from CKLA and popped it onto Class Kick. And for the kiddos who are able to access the material, fabulous, they can read it, have a grand time. But for kiddos who aren't, we have recorded ourselves reading the story so that they can still get the work done even if no one's at home to help them read and they're not able to read the text by themselves. So they would read or listen to the story. And then there's our comprehension check at the end that we will look at and make sure they had an understanding of what they did that day. And then they would raise their hand on Class Kick and be like, all right, they did their work for the day.
Are the questions read as well?
They're not, but it's something to be a good... We could pop that on there.
I'm just wondering if, because like, you know, you read the story, you can see that and the thing that doesn't see it pop up there. But if a kid's struggling reading, they might struggle reading the question as well.
Absolutely.
Do you prefer snow days or virtual days?
So as a parent in the district, I like virtual dates to use virtual days first because I feel it interrupts my kids' schooling less because it is just a continuation of what we're doing or what they're doing in class. And I feel a lot of times, being a teacher and having two kids in the district, I try to schedule appointments or vacations for days that I know we have off that are maybe snow makeup days. So then if we have to make them up, then okay, well now I've got to take the kids out of school for three days anyway because I have this trip planned and, you know, we have doctor's appointments and now I got to have this. And so I, I do, as a parent, I like having that virtual option first because they're still learning. It's not an interruption to their learning. That's what, I've read that quote of yours.
How often as a teacher do you find where the kiddo had no support or could not figure it out? It's third grade, yeah, you say they're proficient at it, but how often do they, do you come in, you know, we're off on Wednesday or whatever day you just showed there and they come in and nothing's done, just didn't do it. Didn't have access to internet, didn't do it, didn't have any guidance.
I think the fact that we use it every day in our classroom is helpful because then they can easily access it themselves. They don't really necessarily need their parents, most of them. And then we do talk to them about it, like if we're, hey, we're not going to, like, I don't know, was it just a few weeks ago? We thought maybe it might be a virtual day. So we're like, take your iPads home. If we're going to be virtual for any reason, like, you know, check Google Classroom. So they're usually pretty aware, but I think, or even when they're absent, they ask for what's on Google Classroom that they don't get behind. And the kids too, during virtual Wednesdays, I mean, there was enticement, like kids who came in with all of their work done. Here, you've got your ticket. The other kids are like, look how many tickets they got. I mean, it took a while while we were getting them used to all the platforms, but like I said, since we do use the platforms now, I mean, we have kiddos that are going on vacations and parents are like, can you set us up with everything they would need for vacation? And again, it's something that is easy for us now. Maybe a couple of years ago, we couldn't even wrap our heads around doing all of this. But now it's just kind of, it's the world we live in and the kiddo is knowing. I mean, we get parents saying, there's spelling lists, they didn't come home. And we'll be like, Johnny, where can you find your spelling list? It was on Google Classroom.
Right here.
Right there. Your loose paper is there along with...
Every week.
So, I mean, and we did too, at back to school, like introduce this to the parents, like this is their responsibility. We'll show them how to use it if they have any questions, like dojo us, but these kids use this every single day.
And it's really helpful as well that we have dojo because it's like texting the work of the parents. So if they do have any questions or the kid is really struggling with something, they text us for dojo and we get it immediately and are able to do damage control and help over you.
With Andy still making, or still, still decisions, I mean, if it says flourish, you gotta push it out.
It's not me guys' hair.
Well, two, Tammy definitely in that classroom.
Oh, that's true.
The truth is kind of happening when they're all looking up and they're like, it's snowing, are we going home or are we going to...
It is a lot easier. I, I do remember phone calls at four in the morning with Kyle saying, ah gee, Andy, I just don't know.
Now, are you sleeping?
But I will say for my own kids, I'm like, are you kidding me? Why do they have a snow day?
We have a question for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the calendar that was proposed, and we wanted to kind of give you that interactive piece. There are expectations that are sent out to staff as far as posting assignments, being live on Zoom. There is a little more academic freedom as to what gets posted to content. You know, third grade here does an excellent job of that. So the calendar that we're proposing for next year, that was emailed out, first day of school is on the 23rd of August. The last day is May 30th. And what it does is it shifts, we always have an in-service day in March, middle of March. And what we're finding is as some of the stuff that Tim and Dennis laid out is we're trying to increase some of that professional development to get staff involved, to be able to get information. And the, the model we want to go to is when new things come out or we need to expose staff to it, we start the year and we expose that information. We expose those new techniques or we expose that training. A mid-year in-service day allows us then to focus, refine, look at, and then, you know, then evaluate towards the end of the year. So we're trying to strategically place in-service days. And so that's where, you know, about half of the county is closed on Martin Luther King, about half of the county has in-service days. And so as we were structuring the, the calendar, the thought was, you know, that's, that is a perfect opportunity to have a mid-year in-service day. Day 90 is right around that corner. And then as we're looking, you know, our recommendation is that we try to hold to the days off on the calendar as best we can. So what we're recommending is then President's Day is a closed day. And, you know, typically on those snow days, you know, February, I think this might be deep, knock on wood, the first year, I think in 20 years that I've ever had, President's Day is not a snow makeup day or open. The forecast as it shows is, is unique. But then also, you know, when that day is not closed, it also becomes a very long period of time for kids, staff, parents, until that March or that Easter break. So we're striving to strategically place days and, and take a look at things. So our recommendation is we use those flexible instructional days first. And then we turn to the Easter break for the first three days and take those first three days to guarantee Holy Thursday, Good Friday, and Easter Monday as days that are closed. So that allows parents to have some flexibility of traveling over the Easter break. It also gives some flexibility, it gives us up to eight snow days or potential days for inclement weather. What I will say is we are a little loose on the flexible instructional days. The conversations that Dennis and I have had is if we move, like over the last couple of years, we've only used two, two flex, three flexible instructional days. And they've been, and we've exhausted our, our snow makeup days. What we're looking at is I think part of that, if we go to this model, if we're going to definitely use those virtual days, we also want to put a little more structure to what those days need to be, some of those expectations. Like what they presented is very good. There's some content being delivered by the instructors. And then there's, you know, work that follows. So, you know, our recommendation is that we would put it in place with the fit days or the flexible instructional days used first. Then we go to physical snow makeup days for the first three days of Easter break with the caveat that we'll put a little more structure and expectations to what a virtual day looks like.
To, to the teacher?
To the staff, yeah. As far as how it's structured. Right now it's post-assignments. And I think, you know, the packages probably saw they're, they're, they're kind of all over the place. And so we want to put a little bit more of a structure and streamline that so that it's, so the expectation is more uniform in lessons.
Are all the grade levels on some sort of platform like that?
Yes. So K2, sum of three is on Class Kick, but 3 through 12 is on Google Classroom.
So I would guess that their day is going to be shorter when, when they have one of these days. Because when you're in school, you have break and you have recess and you have lunch and you have, which they're going to do at home, but it takes two seconds at home versus everyone getting in line and going down the hall. And so, I mean, as a parent, I think it's complicated, but, but I, I see the value in it. And I would think that the kids' day is going to be much shorter than if they had to go into school. Is that correct?
I would say more than likely, yeah. Because if, at some point, there is a self pacing.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, there is that for us.
For my own kids, it's very structured, very similar. I would say what should take them 20, 30 minutes, some takes them an hour of screaming and fighting with them to actually do the work. So I think that factors into how long of a day it is.
So if you have a kid, like my daughter would have this looked out in 10 minutes and she'd be like, do you know it? And then I put her and she'd be like, no. So I, she would love that. But I mean, for a lot of kids, it would be, but I still think it would be shorter.
It probably takes more to, and a half day or at least. It probably takes more to, and a half day or at least.
Yeah, yeah.
If it would have been me and we had a snow day on a Wednesday, I'd have been up at six o'clock Thursday morning trying to get it done.
And I'm sure that's a good idea. I, I, I did have lunch last Friday with, with two fifth graders. And I asked them, one of the things, one of the questions they asked ironically was both of the topics part of my job. And it was right after that last snow day or the last snow call. And so we were talking about that. And they asked why we don't do virtual things. And I said to them, well, if you had your choice, what, what would you prefer? And they said virtual things. They said, we don't, not that we love the, the iPads or the computers, but it allows us, you know, the one girl said, you know, if it's posted the night before, I work on it right away or I'll go, I can go outside and play and then I can come back in later that evening and do the work. It does give that flexibility. You know, and so that was, it was interesting. Both of them kind of said the same thing. They like, but they both said that probably if they had to choose, they would get the work done as fast as they can and then, you know, have the day to do things.
Have you asked whether students in different age, you know, it's fifth graders? Have you asked?
I, I. Here and there, like nothing formal. I mean, the, the feedback that I get overall is why don't we use the, the virtual days?
This is the world they're getting used to.
I mean, I think the general consensus is it's not like we log the days, but, you know, we'd rather have the virtual days than. So is everybody okay with the calendar as presented? So then we'll put it on the agenda. I know Bill won't vote for it.
But Bill, we're getting closer to that May day. I mean, that, that day's there.
You said if we got it down to May, you would support it.
I, I did actually do a calendar one time. I did a calendar one time with after Labor Day, before Memorial Day. And it is doable, but it cuts out all holidays. Like you get Christmas off, you get Thanksgiving off, but it does consume all of the days.
I truly believe the kids need that break. They need those days.
So I would say at this, for this year, we continue the, the format we have. We exhaust snow days and then next year we adopt the, the virtual days first. We are allowed up to five.
By the state?
By the state. Yeah, you can't exceed five. And then what we have to do is every year we have to upload what, what those dates actually were. So the next piece is, I'm going to turn it over, but before I say that, there is something unique under item D that's on the agenda that you'll notice. On January 24th, Mr. Dr. Quark successfully defended his dissertation, converting him over to an official doctor. So I'll preface our ESR funding for ESR 2. If you remember a year ago, a year and a half ago, we presented what that plan would be. It included the idea of some outdoor classrooms that we would discuss and bring back, remaking some of the libraries into some unique dynamic learning spaces. And Dr. Quark has taken that initiative on and he'll present those ideas to you tonight.
So I tried to present to Apple and give you the search of it and mine doesn't connect. You have three minutes.
So want to give a real quick overview, like 30,000 of S R 2, just kind of bring everyone back to.
Matt, I think you have it out. I have these, these are all there, so.
This is on nine. It is on license. It's not transitioning on that.
Trying to see.
All I say, if you want to be a work, work group for virtual days, it's got to work.
That'll work. This is only 80 slots. I'm just kidding. So 30,000 for S R 2. Back in 2020, we filled out a grant for just over 1.3 million. Everything that you see in this table that we had kind of accounted for essentially over the last three years, we, we put into place and then exhausted. The only piece to it that we still have to talk about is the perspective of food service stuff. But in the plan that was presented was 441,000 to go towards outdoor classroom and library reconfigurations. And right now, the way ESR 2 is set up is that the, the spending period for this is over September 30th of this year. So this is, this is kind of when I came aboard the last piece of this grant that, that, you know, got initial traction, but then we haven't further developed. So I started working with Lindsay and Andrew, who deals with the elementary schools. And we started to kind of collaborate and pull together some different ideas. And I want to ultimately just give you a high level of your where we're at, what we're thinking because ultimately we've got to start moving on these projects to capitalize on the ESR funding. Ultimately to get it in place and capitalize on the summer. So when our students return in the fall, these learning spaces will be available for them. The first one would be outdoor classrooms. And I just wanted to throw some examples out there because we're in initial stages. Penn Burnville Elementary, the original plan was to put a hardscape outdoor classroom right outside the first grade classrooms next, adjacent to the walkway anyway for the playground. So really, we're not looking at doing anything crazy innovative other than getting a, a large patio space with some furniture out there that's conducive, that classrooms can go outside, they can learn outside. That space would be available for any amount of use and it's adjacent to the playground. So that area is really just looking to be a multipurpose area where we can extend the walls of, of the school and just place it right in that nook of the, of the building, which would add some, some security in terms of we have two walls, or three, almost three complete walls. We have good supervision and just good open space. Bethel's a little different. Bethel's approach is to capitalize on the two courtyards that are in there. And Mr. Gears has been working on how he can capitalize and make this into usable spaces. The, the first would be the courtyard directly, take the courtyard directly outside of the cafeteria. So putting kind of a walking path, setting up picnic tables with awnings, getting students to get outside and eat and have the opportunity to do work outside. In the meantime, he's even gone as far as taking the outside and bringing it in by putting artificial turf in the cafeteria with a picnic table. So I'll let him celebrate that, but he's, to, to jump the gun, he's already bringing the outside in. This would just create more space, again, get students outside, get them fresh air, working collaboratively, eating, just giving them a different environment. It brings purpose to those courtyards. In addition to that, we're, the plan is to put some raised beds in there. That could be incorporated into, you know, science, ag, really, I mean, this would be maintained by student safety, multipurpose, other than just for aesthetics. Ultimately, we're looking to do the pathways and be real strategic about stone because of the drainage and because of some of the upkeep and dynamics of those areas. So we want to make them purposeful and intentional, but we don't want to make it something that's going to be a bear to maintain or cost, you know, a, a crazy amount of money because of access to that area. The other courtyard area already has kind of a pond there, so it's really kind of cleaning it up. So the plan there is in the middle, have a pergola, you know, which would be kind of a nice neat area for students to go out to read, to kind of have some independent or collaborative work. Working with Mr. Foreman and, and working on getting some art on walls and making this just like a, a really neat kid-owned and, and learner-friendly outdoor area to, to just experience different things. So Mr. Gears' plan is taking those interior courtyards and transition them into usable space. And then for Mr. Babzak, the plan is to get that nice hardscape area outside of first grade wing so that we can, again, just, when we can't get outside, get outside. It's definitely healthy and good for students. When it comes to the libraries, we talked a lot about the junior, senior high school project and square footage. When you look at our library spaces, these are huge areas that could be prime for some really innovative and cool learning experiences. It's nice that the third grade was here, but earlier this year I had the opportunity to participate in an activity that the third grade took all three of their classrooms, put them in Bethel's library, and they did this really cool full third grade activity where they were running all around, communicating, collaborating, building. It was exciting. But the space itself is set up very traditionally. It wasn't necessarily conducive to that type of learning and that type of level of collaboration. And what we'd love to do is transform the library from just that traditional place that stores books and, and research and, you know, important documents to be multifaceted. It does that, but also has furniture and equipment that is flexible and conducive to pushing the limits of what we can offer in a classroom. We want to get students out of their individual classroom learning silos and group student groups together and hold, you know, a full grade level competition or lesson or activity, like make it into a mini lab over 100%. So we started to play around with different ideas. The key concept is we really want to take the interior bookshelves and we want to make the interior space completely open while maintaining and keeping the outside for, for books, for the literary elements because they're valuable pieces to the educational process as well. In the meantime, the central space needs furniture that can be reconfigured. It has to be easily moved, it has to be kid-friendly. We want to excite the teachers and students to want to come into the library and to, to make that room a room that the lights are always on and there's always a lot of activity. So we've started playing around with different ideas for furniture, but ultimately we would, we would really start to press full pork with the boards blessing moving forward. And we've worked with Tanner Furniture to just get some initial concepts. But Bethel Library, if you took those middle stacks out, you create all of this open room in the middle, which is really exciting. If you look, both pictures are the exact same furniture. It just shows you how flexible they can be rearranged and grouped into different learning environments. So you have more of a traditional classroom setup with tables and chairs, but you have these neat collaborative soft seating areas and some flexible bookshelves. I mean, those would separate and create a natural barrier. But if you wanted to do more collaborative work or change the space up, all of this material just gets rearranged and fits nicely together to create different learning spaces. Our goal would be to get some presentation boards, like smart boards on wheels, that you can have two to three classes in there. They can be run independently or they can run all together. And ultimately, again, just having a space that is exciting, it's, it's student-friendly and it really expands the limits of what we can do as a, from a learning experience standpoint, from just the traditional rows and columns and square desks to promoting some of those skills and attributes that we want to keep pushing. So baking anybody? Yes?
So how many books would you have to eliminate to be able to do this?
Zero. We have, if you go into libraries right now, there are a lot of, and we have a ton of shelves. So there are shelves we will have to reorganize. We will have to restructure where things are. But where we have blank wall space, the plan is to also utilize some of those interior bookshelves and get them out to that blank wall space that we have so that we're still maintaining as much storage as we can.
And will that change the, I don't know, we're going to call it the sound level? I was always told you were supposed to be able to hear a bid drop in the library.
So that's the tough part, right? And there's different philosophies there. I would, I would much rather walk through, walk past that library and hear like engagement than walk past that library and hear absolutely nothing. We want that to be alive.
Back, back, way back, way back. We were always told, you gotta be quiet, but that's okay.
So we're, absolutely. So we're looking to change things up. And this is, these are just prototype ideas. They're not ultimately, then we ended up continuing to collaborate. The picture that I have for Penn Burnville is the same furniture, but we also have a design that has different furniture and different elements. So again, same concept in Penn Burnville. Let's look at taking the interior shelves away. Let's get flexible movable furniture that promotes collaborative learning and allows for different activities to happen. And let's just make this space, a space where teachers are trying to sign out and are struggling to sign it out instead of, you know, 2,500 foot square, square foot area that's just housing our books right now. So right now, we're, again, we're going to work with Matt as well with this process. We'd be looking at freshening up paint. We're going to assess the state of the carpet because that carpet hasn't been changed since either those, those rooms were put in. So we might do a little bit of facelift work with lighting that Matt's been doing with carpet, with paint, but ultimately the bulk of it's going to be in, you know, furniture to try to make those spaces exciting for students. So next step, and then I'll take some questions. We'll consider this a quick. Outdoor classroom with your blessing again, and to go ahead at the next meeting, we'll finalize the plans for those outdoor learning spaces. Work with Matt on how we're going to get the work done and accomplished. Library reconfiguration, same thing. We'll determine those final furniture selections, work to get those ordered ideally in March so that when they deliver and install it over the summer. And my hope would be that all those learning spaces are ready for students day one when they return in fall of 23. And again, what I'm ultimately looking for is, this was planned back in 2020. It was mentioned that we bring it back in terms of where we're at with ideas. With the timeframe of having this set by September of 23, I'd love to get on this, get approval from you and get on the project and get these spaces to where we think they, they could be really neat and innovative.
Cost estimates for what?
Furniture right now, rough cost estimate as drawn up is about 58,000 per library for furniture. Now we still have to assess carpet, we still have to assess everything else. But that was just kind of a rough first blush of getting ideas. So I can bring this here and show you what we're thinking.
So if there's excess funds, then we can put it towards hands-on lab type stuff using these spaces?
So in addition to that, we're looking at some of the technology that's flexible. We can certainly look at other, like we, Andy and I even talked about, why just fill all carpet? Could we put some more like, I'm not a flooring guy, but more like homium style? And if we, maybe in one space, it's conducive that we're working with hardcore chemicals. But could we just fill all carpet? Like, so we've been talking about different ideas of flooring to make that, like even the stem area where we can just use it for multipurposes. But ultimately, before we ran through those final steps, just want to make sure that we have approval to, to keep working.
So we have 400 something thousand dollars?
For both out, for the outdoor spaces and the libraries?
Yes, because the user are listed, right?
Yes.
So welcome that one. My question was, we had talked way back when about the playground. I think if Bethel needed like their term of flooring done on all the playgrounds, I didn't know if that, any of these funds could be used towards that as outdoor learning or something.
So I talked to Andy about that, the exact same thing today. Because I know we, we pulled me forward Bethel, we saw that playground surface. We also talked about some rubber mulch. There's some, there's some potential there that if we have flexibility to do that.
To expand on.
So, and like I said, I wouldn't know and so I want to make sure that we are all comfortable with the outdoor projects in the library. We're all with those, I can get finalized numbers. $400,000 is not, the libraries are not going to cost that. Those outdoor park yards are not going to cost that with what we have then. I think we could probably do something with those.
I think you're going, till you start adding that all together.
Yeah, I was adding it as my.
It's going to need it, yeah. Especially your outdoor area at Burnville and then doing the courtyards. I think you're going to, I mean, it's a budget number, but I think you're going to, it's going to cost more than you think.
Well, the good, the good thing is, I mean.
You know what's happened.
It's approved as a response for these projects. We don't have to prove a revision. We just want to make sure that we have your approval to put these in action and start getting them to become reality.
And as you start getting them to reality, I encourage you to include Chris and the B and G team to, you know, collaborate that to make sure.
And some of the courtyards at, at Bethel. Andrew does have volunteers that are, or volunteer that is going to work on that. And so, you know, a lot of that piece, the man hours is, is a lot of the volunteer piece. And at one point, we did have a quote for the outdoor classroom now. Brad, this was three years ago, two years ago. There's around 45,000 in the outdoor classroom with papers. I'm sure it's now tripled, but. You know, that's certainly something. You know, that's certainly something. What are projects we can do ourselves with expertise?
Does the high school still have a carpet, like a woodshop?
Yeah.
Build a raised fence and that's something they can come down with?
We, we talked about maybe looking at the I program, our tech ed program or engineering. Now it's an engineering one, we have.
So like this, because this, as we refigured, the expansion and everything, we, you know, kind of tracked some of that stuff down, but this is allowing, when we visited the different schools and collaborations, which are like, I wish she, I wish we had all of this, but this is going to allow that to happen at a much cheaper.
I was just thinking of some more extra curricular things, athletics and stuff to be able to, if the library was open, that furniture is easy moveable. We throw a wrestling mat down and make an extra area, do you know, to practice like, I don't know if it's doable, I'm just throwing it out there. Or cheerleaders, anything like that gives us some extra space and then all the glitters setting in earlier, the sprints not drying up.
The nine foot ceiling, so cheerleaders.
Cheerleading, yeah.
He's going to a certain tile and move it.
Can we get furniture in six months?
Yeah. In the meantime, if we're, when I talk to the reps, if we, we move forward and we get orders in in March, we would, we would easily be able to install this and so on.
Be devotions to that or just verbal go ahead?
I think we kind of already had the ESRS kind of plot plan, it's just Dennis bringing it back and.
Gotcha. Yeah, as long, as long as it sounds, you know, we're on the right track, we'll put it all together and then bring it, you know, over to the board. That ends my report.
Are there any citizens or students wishing to address the board pertaining to attend the I? Seeing none, we're going to keep it on the building.
Mr. App. So the junior senior high school, the project is moving forward, we're back on track, moving every, meeting every two weeks, getting things in motion. In the original project, asbestos abatement was supposed to happen, was one of the first things that was supposed to happen. Had we awarded those bids in June, by July and August, we would have started pulling down ceilings, ripping up floors, and a lot of the asbestos that exists in the building is contained to floor tile, there's some window paneling, there's some pipe fittings that have it. The majority of the wrapped pipes have long been removed, but anything that was manufactured that has asbestos is, is still maintained or still in the older portion of the building. What Jeff and his team are proposing is to be able to shrink that timeline down to 28 months from three years, we would like to move the asbestos abatement up first and get it done this summer. And you can see what that plan or what the purpose of that drawing is, is everywhere it's teal or light blue, that is ceiling and, you know, we had planned from the get-go that when the project starts, all the ceilings come down so that if they need to run piping, they need to run electrical, it's there. So we knew that from day one, the majority of our ceilings would not exist in hallways in the project. The proposal here is anywhere where it's green, slashed green, would be where asbestos tile exists, and we'd like to remove that starting in June. Now here's the caveat, if you will. We're proposing removing the asbestos ahead of the bidding project for the project. So assuming that we bid the asbestos, the bids come in in, in July, we award them in July, and we start the construction, the beginning of August, we're good to go. Part of what we're nervous about is if things don't pan out, we will have no floors and no ceiling in the building. But not doing this project will set us back several months in the, in the timeline.
And at that point, if that sets us back in the timeline, does that affect the bid or do they feel that affects the bidders' ability to be competitive or what does that affect? Or does it just push the whole timeline back?
So what, what they thought, what they felt is that if we didn't pull those ceilings down and do the floors, well, more the ceilings, it's just going to be, it's going to be an issue when it comes to running new HVAC, plumbing, it's going to be a bigger delay, if you will, or we'd be taking sections down and putting them back up. The flooring as well is, what their thought was, is if they removed it this summer, as the sections that are green are turned over, they're getting into those, those classrooms and they don't have to wait for the asbestos, they don't have to wait for the containment, it's already done, they're getting in the room and they're ripping apart and turning them over. So in the projections, a lot of that green areas that are classrooms, they feel that they can turn those over a lot quicker. Some of those areas are turned over within a summer back to us because, you know, the contaminants or the asbestos has been removed and we don't have that waiting. When we removed it, there's one in the front of the building that, right in the corner there, that we had a pipe burst and we removed that asbestos, but to get, to get somebody in to remove that tile was a process. And then once they removed it, we were what, two weeks to remove it, I think it was? Oh, yeah. So we were trying to line that stuff up so that that is not a delay in any respects, that when they hit that, those areas of the building, they're good to go, they don't have to, they don't have to wait.
Is there a necessary time frame to take them to remove the tiles of the floor?
They said that as soon as the school, as soon as our year ends, they will be in, we would line it up, that we would begin in June and it will be ready for the start of the year, that they would have it all taken care of. The only area that they will wait until construction is, is the auditorium, and that's in the orange part, because the ceiling is asbestos, the tile floor is asbestos. They think they can remove pieces of it this summer on the flooring, but they said they're gunning the auditorium anyway, so that would be the optimum time to then remove the asbestos at that one.
And Cole, on your question earlier, they said it will make it more attractive for bidders if they have a shorter timeline.
And this actually, this actually, the asbestos, one of the asbestos bidders actually came to us and said, our recommendation is, why don't you remove it from the project, bid it separately, because we believe, and then we don't have to coordinate with the GC, we can do it on our timeline and work with the district. And they felt that they could do it a little cheaper if it was bid separately.
Are any of those companies going to start a food that you're so stressed, could you get a better price out of it? Where you don't have to put it out to bid?
I think you could better still, I agree, that'd be a petition.
Yeah. I recommend bidding anyway, if that'd be the project.
Do you not think they're booked up for this summer already?
No, they, so we have a, we, we have an asbestos company that we work with, that is kind of a consultant, that also has worked with Crabtree to kind of map this project out, and there's no concern that they would, that they would be able to get it done or be able to do it.
The only concern I have, I'm all for going ahead, but what if the number misses the second time?
Jeff owes us a ceiling report.
There's a lot more of that. And Jeff, Jeff will be here next, next board meeting as well, because we will be, we have to redo the Act 34 hearing booklet because it's, the scope of the project has changed. So Brian had recommended that we really should redo the Act 34 to bring it into compliance. So they will be here to present a little bit of the Act 34 booklet, a rough draft. But, so we do, we do have, we have a couple, we have a room that we never reinstalled the floor because we knew project was coming. So the one, that, that corner one right at the end there that's white, that just, they cleaned the floor up, I don't remember, I think they sealed the floor. I think we asked them to seal to see what it looks like. The floor is not bad looking, I mean, there's not, you know, that room at least, there's no cracks in it. It, it, it's odd that it's on the floor, but, you know, if the bids would not come in, we would, then we'd have to kind of come back and say, all right, are we going to put floors in this building?
So my question would be, if they're not going to start tearing the floor out at the end of school, when are all the bids going to be in for us to say yes or no that we can still cancel having that removed of the floor ceiling?
We'll go out to bid officially at the beginning of June, five weeks out will put us into July, and then we would be looking to award bids that meeting in July, which I think is the 18th or something.
As far as Kyle, I would do it if I could know who the bids are on. You know, because if the bid misses, then you're up, you know, what's red.
I, I don't know that I'm there, just for the record. I mean, it's concerning, it's concerning, it's, it's very concerning to me, but I, I don't know that I'm there. And I, I do believe, just, you know, knowing enough about the building market right now, there's a lot of stuff that is back to pre-coat the pricing, pre-coat availability, especially in your residential world.
I'm not seeing everybody shopping.
For instance, lumber, dimensional lumber right now is cheaper than it was in 2020.
That's what the guy from Everon Lumber told me too, says it's all time low at craft.
Correct, yes. So is the commercial market, you know, and again, looking at the statistics and, I'm guessing, but, you know, the last time we saw things go this way, you know, the prior board did a stadium for how many million dollars last?
Three.
Yeah. You know, are, are we almost there that it's going to trickle down to us? I don't know.
Your, your concern is that if we don't do this, and we have $2.1 million worth of the ESRS three funding bid or the HVAC, and the tidings amendment, it, that's supposed to be spent by September 23, but the tidings amendment pushed it to 24. But it doesn't have to be committed, it has, there has to be some sort of commitment to it.
If for September. Students have to have benefited from the use of the spots by the end of the title.
That's 24, but there is some sort of commitment, it has to happen before September 23. And that way, our bid would be in and we would accept HVAC C project for that $2.1 million, and then we could purchase the material by September 24, but now that it somehow got pushed back, that, that would be the concern.
Where's that money coming from for the asbestos? Does that come out of the?
That's in the, that's in budget or the, it is off costs of the project.
And that's something we could just afford. Yes. I think the bid came in a little over 400,000, right around 400,000.
The blessing probably.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was, I, I, I don't remember what the number was, I think it was like a couple thousand, shy.
And I guess too, we could always bid and see where that number is, and if we're not comfortable at that time, it goes to the bottom.
If you're doing it, you got to seal the floors, not the ceilings, it's a different story. You just got to seal the floors to abuse them, but then the asbestos is out of there.
It shouldn't be removed.
You're, you're headed to volume one way or the other. If you wait till July to do it, then it won't be, then your optics back at school and the project won't be started. So you're either.
Yeah, I understand the janitors and stuff can work on your other library projects and stuff like that.
Yeah, so the thought process is the, I had asked the architect how this would work, and he said most times they'll do a chunk, so like the 100 hallway, the 500 and stuff like that. So I talked about, we can have our, all our custodians help to remove all that stuff and then they can split off the other buildings and help them out with their problems as well. So there will still, like, the junior high, they're still going to have to clean and everything because there's not much more on there, other than ceiling tiles are going to be out. So they will have substantial work to do, but it's just going to be live.
It's just going to look different.
Yeah.
I think you move ahead and get it done.
So the, the motion then on the agenda, if everybody's in agreement, would be to proceed with authorization of bidding this project. They're currently working on it, and then they will, we will put out the bid, and then we will look to award the bids or see what they come in, you know, March, I think it was March.
We have approved recognition to look at Comcast, high sources for different point area network service. I think also.
So what this is for technology, it connects our buildings back to the high schools of Bethel, Burnville and this building. We have to do this every couple of years for E-rate, get it, fit it, approve. Comcast actually was the only one that fitted again, which is a service we already have. Currently, we pay 4,800, so this bid was very nice to see. And then our E-rate funding would actually take this month to cost down to $435.28. You know, we paid 30.
You pay 4,800 a month now.
Yeah.
What's the difference?
Market changes? I, I don't know.
It's crazy.
It, it keeps going down every time we bid. Now, I don't know how much it can go back down next time, but.
Because the infrastructure here is improving because of all the commerce in here?
Probably. And also, it's already existing, so they don't have to build it out. So there's, there really is no expense to them, it's just continuing to maintain it and fix the price, but I mean, not much wood, I don't know the last time I actually went down. Again, I should, or a lot of wood, I shouldn't even say, but they've been really good about that. If there is a forklift that went through the wire down here, they had that backed up for like six hours, so it was very determined on time, and they replaced that wire.
Kind of like the blue, we're running out of dirt.
Yeah, none of this is going to actually. See, camera security system upgrade.
So I'd like to keep this one as quick as the last one, but it probably won't be. One of the things I was looking at as moving into this new role was the security systems, which is your card access and your alarms for our buildings. With that, we, we started looking at this, did you hear, I believe? At that point, I, we were already switching to our fracada cameras at the stadium here and, and Burnville, we started to do that. Fracada also is in the security business as well, ties up in all the same app, for all that stuff. So I got some demos, really liked what they're providing. We had some other companies come in as well and see what they're doing. They, a lot of the other companies, I hate to say stuck in the past, but it's more systems that they install it on a server in our location and they don't touch it for 10 years. Whereas Fracada is, with it being in the cloud, they touch everything, it's like upgrades and changes. We see it with cameras, not as much anymore, not, it's not as many tweets, but we do see upgrades like every month or two to our systems, which is, and keeps us secure that way. So part of that, really liking the thought and see where this. So we, I started looking at that. We did get some other bids in as well, and they were all substantially higher than the Fracada price, which we're going to have something to see going forward. So the, what we're proposing to do is upgrade the cameras at Bethel, bring them into the same system as Burnville and district office in the stadium. This is the company we're also going to select to do our high school projects as well. So it was one to bring in the whole district, same, same can of glass, same company. Couple of the high level items that I really liked with this system, all their hardware is warranty 10 years, cameras, door controllers, alarm panels, all, all have a 10 year warranty. We did have one camera gone bad, they sent me a new one the next day, put it in, been fine ever since. So as far as hardware, they've been great company to work with, sale, or sales and support have been really nice to work with. It's almost been one of those you plug it in and almost forget about it until you have to go use it or beat something. It's almost been one of those you plug it in and almost forget about it until you have to go use it or feed something, but. So part, camera upgrade at Burnville, or, I'm sorry, Bethel. And then the other cost is to upgrade our door controllers and our alarm panels in the whole building. So it'll be the Fieldhouse, Burnville, Bethel, and, I say Bethel, Bethel, Burnville, Fieldhouse, and here, sorry. The other nice piece, it can use the cameras actually for sensors, so it can actually use those to do motion for the alarm, and we can actually separate our buildings that way. So for youth sports, for instance, when they use a gym at Bethel or Burnville, we can disarm just that section of the building and almost not lock them in, but if they go outside, we would be aware of it and let them know, maybe you're outside your area, back, or we can figure out what to do there. But it, it'll be nice to just have that building well separated. Right now, we have a lot of issues in our elementary schools. They, the alarm, especially at Burnville, it's hard for them to know it's off, you have to wait ten seconds for a turn off. So we actually had one last week, people just fight it twice and actually arm the building again, set the alarm off, which caused the police to be called. The other nice piece of this is they have twenty-four outdoor monitoring, where if an alarm goes off in the building, the company actually will look into cameras for you and evaluate that threat. If it looks like a bad actor, they call the police immediately, let us know what's going on in the building. If there's not a threat, it's a bus driver, or someone in crime, or something like that, they'll alert us that it would happen, but they won't call the police. So we don't have to cancel that service or have the police come up for no reason. It also has direct access on our phones, so when an alert does happen, it popped up right on our phone, we can actually give the video clip, reply that alarm went off in the right way, and take act, or take action to it. The cameras, we would do all in-house, so tech and maintenance would install those at Bethel and double here at the District Office. The card access and alarm, because none of us have familiarity in that, we did contact the company Dolphin Electra, or Dolphin Electronics, which is actually the company that all our lights from, for like the gyms and stuff. Do have those quotes, if anybody wants to see them, and open to any questions or that.
And that was budgeted in the.
So we're using part of the capital projects, part of, for our buildings now, so.
So that was part of the five-year plan?
Yes.
And I think Tom, you have budgeted each year five hundred. So how does it determine a bad actor versus?
So they, they have people on staff.
Oh, really, okay.
And when, when an alarm is triggered, they don't have access to our cameras unless we grant that to them. So, that would be an option, I probably would say, they, when an alarm happens, they get access to just those cameras to see what's going on.
Is that that five-year, five years of security?
Yes.
So they would provide that for a fee?
Yes, and then after that, it's that fee per year.
And that's included in the.
It's included in the proposal, and then you can do license, you can do one, it's one, three, five, and ten year licenses. You can get a five.
Let's say after five years, you found the next best thing, I would go to, because it just makes sense. What happens to the data that's in this? Can you still, let's say you have to go back for an incident that happened?
Right.
Can you still have that for you?
So, all of the data is exportable, so we could keep that data. The camera access is third base, so we wouldn't be able to oversee the camera stuff, but we would be able to down the level of card access on the alarm. If that, if that makes sense. The clips can stay, it's like if an alarm is triggered, there's like a power bomb clip, so those would stay.
So we'd have to.
Google mask your.
Yeah, in essence, yes.
All them type of cameras.
So who all would have access to this on their phones, like it's midnight and you're, and all the alarms are off?
So, all administrators would have it, it most likely would come to me first or whoever's closest to that building. The phone app, oh, that was another thing I didn't touch on, so right now we get cards for youth sports, we actually got a different account, that they could just log into the app and open the doors and disarm, so we don't have to be carded out all the time, and we can cut that access off immediately. I mean, we could cut the card, but we never get that card back then. So, a little bit of cost savings there without not having to get cards all the time. But, yeah, all administrators would have it, all Kyle most likely for the alarm piece and the door piece. The other nice piece, we'll be able to see doors and actually will alert us if the doors aren't open. Say the door didn't close right, we get alerted right away, and we go take action on that.
So, you're saying about the, the apps, do they have a timeframe of how long it takes for time to hit your button on your phone till it unlocks the door?
It's, it's in seconds.
Because I know I have that for my garage doors every night, it's my wife flies slow, whatever it takes. What I'm thinking forever, till you hit open, and you're sitting there, okay, is it open, is it open, should I open my opener or not?
When, when we, when we saw the demo, it was with it, with an exact, with an exact.
All three doors, by the way, on my phone.
And part of, we were gonna bring this, we were gonna bring this proposal in March, when we discussed this with the, the company, they said they have a special going on in February, that if we can lock down in February, it was a fifty-one-hundred-dollar savings. The other benefit is, right now, we're at an enterprise education level account, once we get to the, because we're adding this system, and then we move into the high school, we then get to another, I think, account status or something like that.
It's some account level status, anytime we order any hardware from them, they'll take forty-five percent off MSRP value. Right now, we're at forty, for what was typical education. So this would give us an account, I, I forgot what he.
I think it was account level status.
Are these primarily educational type users that use the system, or is it across the board?
It, it can be either business, there, there are actually, I do watch a lot of YouTube videos on businesses that do it. Reading School District is one that just put this in, and Potts Road, one of the pots, sorry, I forgot. But they just signed off on doing whole card access alarm, hang cameras, and the whole district, so. So it is a lot of schools moving to this. Now, I was gonna say other schools in the county, but it's also because Jeff Potts runs those schools, he's one of this, his company that posts that stuff. And then he brings wherever he has credit, so. Talking to him, we actually talked about this at our last tag meeting, he, him and his.